And now I'd like to call this February 16th, 2012 Cookville City Council Meeting to Order. Could I get a roll call, please?
Councilman Anderson.
Present.
Councilman Woodford.
Present.
Mayor Swallows.
Here.
Vice Mayor Epps.
Here.
Councilman Albright.
Here.
All present.
Thank you. Would everyone please stand for a moment of silence followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, limited, free, and justice for all.
Thank you. All right, consider approval of agenda as presented. Are there any additions or subtractions from the agenda?
No changes.
No changes? Motion for approval?
So moved.
Second.
All vote?
Five yes votes, motion carries.
All right, consider approval minutes of council meeting held on February the 2nd, 2012. Motion for approval of the minutes?
So moved.
Second.
All right, all vote?
Five yes votes, motion carries.
All right, on to new business. Item three, consider declaring as surplus 65 Glock 21 service pistols and approve trade of surplus pistols and purchase of an additional 10 new pistols. Police Department sponsors Chief Bob Terry. Sorry?
Mayor and council, as you can see, this is kind of a three-part request. First of all, we ask you to consider declaring our current inventory of Glock 21 pistol surplus. Our intent is to take those surplus pistols at that time and trade those for new pistols. And in addition to that is to purchase 10 new pistols as well. Next slide. We'll basically be trading for fourth-generation Glock 21s. And I think we gave you an information packet that hopefully explained most of that for us. Craig's Firearms would be the supplier of that. Craig's is the sole source provider for Glock pistols in the state of Tennessee. And the current pistols that we have in inventory were purchased in 1994. And they are second and third generation. Next slide. Also, I think, including your packet, these were just some of the benefits that we wanted to highlight for you, the improvements, if you will, of the fourth-generation Glock. As you can see, there talks about night sights. The current pistols we have do have night sights, but there's a shelf life on those. And they're kind of nearing the end of that shelf life to where that trinium process kind of fades over time. And so you have to replace those sights. So if we did that alone, that would be about $55 or $60. So if there's any questions about any of those, I'd be glad to address those at this time. If not, next slide. The trade pistols, we're trading for those at $168 per unit. And then the total cost of that would be $10,920. Purchased the new ones, and we purchased those at $473. And of course, the total cost is $473.30. Total cost of the entire transaction is $15,650. We have a burn grant in the amount of $6,919 to pay for part of that. And then the revenue generated from our recent seized firearm auction would pay for the remainder of that. Subject to your questions.
By the way, sorry, Major Evans. Called you Chief Terry. Do I have a motion for approval?
So moved.
Second.
Questions from the council?
Mr. Mayor, I'm sir. Just one quick question. The grant, actually, we went over this in work session. Everything seemed in order. And I spent some time asking some questions about the specs. I'm really not much of a gun person. And spent some time looking at the specs and et cetera with folks that really understand this stuff. Apparently, this is a very, it's a good deal for the city. But you said the burn grant?
Yeah, there's a, it's a Department of Justice William J. Burn grant. It's more of an allocation. We get that every year. It's nothing that we actually apply for. We're allocated so much, and we share that grant with the Sheriff's Department. And then our portion of that is, this year, $6,919.
Is that federal money?
Yes, sir.
Do we have to meet that? Do we have to match that amount?
No, it's a non-match. Basically, you have to do, when you accept it, you have to submit to them a program or some kind of, like, what we filed under this year was a technology improvement. And that was the technology of improving the firearms in our inventory. So you basically just present to them a program of what you're going to use that money for, and then they approve that or disapprove it.
Any other questions?
No.
Anything from the audience? Seeing none, all vote?
Five yes votes, motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Major Evans. Item four, consider approval of T-DOT consultant selection policy for projects funded by the Federal Highway Administration or T-DOT sponsors, Mr. Greg Brown.
Mayor and council, this is a policy that we're required to pass. We're using T-DOT or federal money. It's a policy that describes how you procure engineering or technical services. It's basically what we've been doing anyway, but we are required to pass this policy. And if we're allowed to ask or answer any questions, I'd request your approval.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. Do I have a motion for approval?
So moved. Second.
All right, questions from the council? Comments?
It's my understanding you said that these are things that we do all the time anyway. They just want it in writing whenever we...
Well, we just have to formally adopt this policy on how we procure those services. But it's basically what we do anyway.
Is this something, Neil? This form, is this...
This policy?
Right.
I don't know how long it's been in effect, but if you're using T-DOT or federal money and you need an engineer and you're using that money to do it, you have to follow these policies.
I read the whole thing.
I didn't.
I'm ready to pass it.
Okay.
All right, any other questions? Seeing none, all vote?
I got it. Five yes votes, motion carries.
All right. Item five, consider approval of engineering contract for Phase One of the Tennessee Central Heritage Rail Trail Project sponsors, Mr. Greg Brown.
Mayor and council, using the policies we just passed, we evaluated three engineering companies. Clinton Engineering was the firm that came out on top. We have negotiated a contract for $34,000 to make some changes to the first phase of the trail, which comes from the depot to the ball fields in Allgood. And they'll be changing, we had to change some locations due to property owner conflicts and some utility problems. And I would request your approval.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. Do I have a motion for approval?
So moved.
Second.
All right, questions from the council?
Question, just a quick question, Mr. Brown. I asked this in the work session, but I'd like you to, since we're in a more public forum, I'd like you to kind of address this a little bit. Does this, by passing this, keeps, this keeps this project on the forefront, moving ahead as scheduled?
Yes, that's the plan, to go ahead and get this redesigned and resubmit this for approval and hopefully move on with construction this year, or at least bid it out this year.
Good, thank you.
And this money is coming out of the grant money that we have received previously?
Yes, ma'am.
I had one question on deciding the engineering group. I was just looking through this. The qualifications look like, is this like from a one to 15 grading system?
Each one was a one to five on each one of those. And then we just added whatever, we had three people evaluating them. And then we just totaled them up and averaged them, and which one came out the best is who we chose.
Okay. Just curious. Any other questions? All right, seeing none, all vote?
Five yes votes, motion carries.
All right. Item six, consider awarding bid for Lee Seminary Road Improvements. Public Works Department sponsors, Mr. Greg Brown.
Mayor and council, we recently opened bids, Lee Seminary Road Improvements. JNS Construction was the low bidder. Their bid was $1,205,530. Couple more slides. This section is, will improve the road from where the Highlands Business Park Road intersects Lee Seminary Road out to Burgess Falls Road. There'll be a three-lane road on this section. I request your approval.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. Do I have a motion for approval?
So moved.
Second.
Questions from the council?
What is construction supposed to begin on this if there are...
On this part?
Correct.
Well, after we sign the contracts, then the contractor will have to get together his permits with the state, T-DAC permits, put it together, his erosion control plan, and get that approved. Once that's done, we should be ready to go. So it'll be six weeks, maybe.
Oh, okay.
Oh, that quick?
That quick?
Maybe. It depends on how fast that moves.
I wouldn't hold you to that. All right, any other questions? Comments, questions from the audience? Seeing none, all vote?
Five yes votes, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. Item seven, consider awarding bid for water line leak survey. Water Quality Control Department sponsors, Mr. Ronnie Kelly.
Mayor and council, we opened, took price proposals to do an annual, sort of a third of our system water leak survey. And we're going to do the inner portion of the system there on the screen. And we got two price proposals, Match Point, $219 a mile, and Richards, $110 a mile. We'd recommend the Richards LMC as the low proposal.
Thank you, Mr. Kelly. Do I have a motion for approval?
So moved.
Second.
All right, questions from the council?
Is the Richards LNC, have they done work with you before?
Yes, he's done most of the work. We've had a couple of other guys, Mr. Weaver, he didn't bid. We sent him proposals, I talked to him. He was supposed to bring us a proposal and didn't show up. But Richards has done the last survey work that we've had done here in the last year.
All right, any other questions? All right, any comments from the audience, questions? Seeing none, all vote?
Five yes votes, motion carries.
All right, item eight, consider awarding bid for Bell Acres Pump Station rehabilitation and modifications. Water Quality Control Department sponsors, Ronnie Kelly.
Mayor and council, we had budgeted some modifications, repair modifications of one of our wastewater pumping stations. And it's the Bell Acres Pumping Station located close to the Bell Acres Golf Course there. It's an older station, was, I think it was installed around 1971, if I'm not mistaken. We've taken, we received five bids. John Hall Construction was a low bidder at a price of $129,511. And we would recommend that bid.
Thank you, Mr. Kelly. Do I have a motion for approval?
So moved.
Second.
Questions from the council? Anything from the audience? Seeing none? All vote?
Five yes votes, motion carries.
All right, item nine, consider awarding bid for water treatment plant upgrade and expansion. Mr. Ronnie Kelly.
Mayor and council, we opened bids recently. And I put my original slide package back in there because I thought one of the council members wasn't here for that meeting, so I was prepared to sort of run through it again. So I'll try to do that real quick and just sort of get through why we're here and where we are today. The original plant was built in '70 out on, by City Lake, and then the plant was moved down in 1970. There was a water line, the water line was brought into town. The plant was upgraded in '83 to 15 million gallons per day and doubled capacity. At that point in time, we were looking at, okay, when the next time we need to do capacity upgrades, what do we need to do? We needed to bring a new trunk line into town to be able to carry that capacity into town. So we started back in '99, started systematically trying to work through this in phases over time where we could fund it and do it. So we did that in '99 to 2003, did the 30-inch water line through the south part of the county and came in and did another 10-million gallon storage tank. Another part of the project was we redid some of our solids handling down there in 2005, and that was a million and a half project. We then, the second phase was sort of going in and doing the intake where we're taking all the water out of the lake and getting it up to the plant and redoing all of that structure and completely redoing it. And this is sort of before and after pictures of what we did. We changed out all the pumps, all the motors, all the electrical, and brought it up into new condition. And that's that project. And that was a $5-million project done in around 2007. Now we're up to the next, sort of a third phase of the four-phase project. This one will redo a lot of the operations center, the pumps that then pump the water from the plant after it's treated, bring it to town. And so that's what this phase will do. This is sort of pictures of the operations center, the pumps and motors that are there, the electrical. And that will take place, basically what you see there, operations building and lab will be brought in to up the standards and expanded, a new electrical room, a pump room, a new clear well, an additional clear well we're going to add. And that's basically an artist's rendering of what the front will look like after that's sort of complete. The original bids we opened, that was on 9/29/11. And let me get my sheet in front where I can see it better. We opened those original bids in September. The low bidder was W. Rogers Companies, $7,488 million. The council rejected those bids. That came in over our budget and estimate. Council rejected the bids on October 3rd. We went out and revised and modified the plans, trying to bring some of that cost down. And estimated, we probably tried to cut around $300,000 by doing some things we thought we could wait on without compromising the project. Re-advertised the bids and opened those bids on January 26th. The low bidder on this bid was WNO Construction, $6,951 million. The low bidder's price reflects a $30,000 deductible from the base bid to gain an additional two months, make it a 12-month project instead of a 10-month project. If we decide to take that deductible, then we need to do an engineering amendment because the engineering contract was negotiated on a 10-month project. And we'll talk about that later if you want to accept that. There was three additional price deducts offered by WNO. We tried to talk to the contractors and suppliers after the first bid of how we could drop some prices and get some better prices. And there were some suggestions made, so we tried to split up some of the suppliers where they would gain competition. And we asked for different alternates and some deducts and stuff like that. And there was three of those offered. There was a $50,000 VFD alternate. It did not meet the specs. We would not recommend accepting it. There was a $35,000 pump control. It's not recommended by the engineer because it's a lesser pump valve than what we expect. And then there was a $37,000 deductible if we used aluminum conductors and we have copper. There was some higher, on the, the other contractors gave us a lot more deductible. And the electrical engineer felt like for that amount of money, we would be better off staying with copper. So I would recommend that we take the WNO's low bid with the $30,000 deductible that would give it a two-month extension, knowing that we do need to do an engineering contract amendment. That'd be my recommendation.
Thank you, Mr. Kelly. Do I have a motion for approval?
So moved.
Second.
Questions from council, comments from council?
I don't think the citizens of Cookville realize the complications that are involved in getting clean water. I'm grateful for Mr. Kelly understanding all of this.
We've got good people.
And I'd like to say rebidding definitely saved half a million dollars in this case. And sometimes people are afraid to rebid because everybody sees what cards are played. But over at the school board and here too, I think you can see that if you rebid it and you do it correctly, you can really save some money. So I think this was a smart thing to do back in September.
Just to point out, it was quite a bit over our original estimate back in October, which is one of the reasons we decided to rebid it for anybody that, I'm not sure if you said that or not.
Yes, it was. It was considerably over our engineer's estimate and our budget at the time.
Right. Any other questions?
Yes, the deductible from WNO Construction in there, does that change anything that would cause any problems with the contract itself? I mean, with the other, with the other people that were bidding on it?
They all offered deducts. We bid it with a 12, give us a 12-month price and a 10-month price.
Okay.
So everybody gave us a deductible. They all gave us the same deductible.
Okay.
Same amount.
Okay. Any other questions? Anything from the audience? Seeing none, all vote?
Five yes votes, motion carries.
Thank you, Mr. Kelly. Item 10, consider approval of water plant engineering contract amendment from Water Quality Control Department, Ronnie Kelly.
Okay, this is the engineering contract on the plant that was signed back in 2010 when we first started doing design on the plant and the project. That contract was negotiated on a 10-month construction project. And during the, during the project, during the first bid, we had some comments from contractors that they thought it should be a 12-month bid, a contract. Some, one of them said they weren't going to bid because it was a 10-month. So that's why we said, well, let's take, let's see a 10 and a 12-month, and let's let them have at it. So if, since we're taking that, well, we need to renegotiate the engineering contract to a 12-month. We, I've done that with the engineer. There will be additional engineering fees of $27,000. And with the $30,000 deductible, we basically get a net positive of $3,000. This, the engineering fees are based on an hourly rate. So if the contractor does finish up on this portion of the resident engineer inspection, if, so if they do finish up 10 and a half months or 11 months, that net positive will be greater. So I'd recommend approval.
Thank you, Mr. Kelly. Do I have a motion for approval?
So moved.
Second.
Questions? Comments? So I mean, there's still a chance this would be done before 12 months and the...
Yeah, there's a possibility.
The sooner it gets done, the more money...
Contractor said he could.
Right.
But I think they'll...
Go 12 months.
It's good to give them time and everybody's not fighting at the end, so...
Okay. Questions from the audience? Seeing none, all vote?
Thank you.
Five yes votes, motion carries.
Thank you, Mr. Kelly. Item 11, consider awarding bids for cable and Hendrick spacer cable system for Southwest Substation sponsors Electric Department, Mr. Tony Peak.
Mayor and council, we've solicited bids on two different types of underground cable. I'll address those collectively if you'd like. The first is the 500 copper underground cable. It'll be used down at the Southwest Substation to come out of the substation. And Stuart CRB was a low bidder at $13.82 a foot for a total of $42,838.90. The second bid tabulation sheet is for Hendrick spacer cable. That will also be used at Southwest Substation going out the north side across I-40. And HD Supply was a low bidder meeting specs, $123,745. I'd recommend your approval on both those items.
Thank you, Mr. Peak. Do I have a motion for approval?
So moved.
Second.
Questions from the council? Questions, comments from the audience? All right, seeing none, all vote?
Thank you.
Five yes votes, motion carries.
Thank you, Mr. Peak. All right, this is a portion of our meeting where we like to open up the floor to any citizens or delegations. Feel free to come forward and state your name or who you're with and questions, comments, anything you'd like. Just, we ask you to hold it to three minutes. All right. Anything from the council?
I wanted to add to my earlier comment about the water. All of our department heads do a great job. And anybody who goes, and I've had the pleasure to spend a day with each of them in watching what they do and what the employees of the city of Cookville do. And it really makes you appreciate things that you don't even think about usually. You know, you really don't think about the roads you drive on until you hit a pothole, which we have very few of. And, and also, you know, turning on the water, the fact that the sewer runs, that when you flip the light on, the light comes on. And there's very little interruption to all of the services that the city of Cookville provides for its citizens. And I've spent time with every department, and it was an eye-opening experience for me. So just want to say, good job, everybody.
Second that.
Anyone else?
Sure. I thought it was kind of interesting, we got handed, we get handed us lots of papers to read and et cetera. And one of these that we got is ordinance number three, which Mr. Shipley, our city manager, handed to us. And I took the time to read this. This ordinance number three was brought together on June 27th, 1912. And ordinance number three was the ordinance that created the office of Town Marshal for the city of Cookville. And I was going through and reading it, and I just kind of thought I would note how things have changed. Our, we don't have a Town Marshal anymore. I guess we have a Chief of Police, but...
He's now city manager.
Marshall Dillon.
At the time, it was a Town Marshal, but some of the... But some of the, other than keeping the peace and enforcing ordinances laws, some of the things that the town marshal had at the time was to make sure that the, they were also the superintendent of the streets. And that they, whatever they said, whatever they said about street repairs went, those got repaired. They were paid $600 a year. Man, that's changed. They were in charge, they were the delinquent tax collectors. They were supposed to stay clean at all times, command their temper. And last but not least, they were supposed to be in charge of keeping the lamps burning at night. But that was struck for whatever reason. I don't know why. That must have been, that must have been somebody else's job.
They didn't have a ladder, maybe.
But I thought, I thought that was, I thought that was fascinating, that our police department has been around for 100 years and how things have changed, how we went from one town marshal to a police force of 70-plus that performs the duties they do. I did have a question, if somebody can answer this for me. One of the items said here, if you were violating a law, so to speak, or an ordinance, that person was to be committed to a calaboose?
Yes.
What is that?
It's a jail.
It's a jail.
It's a terminology for an incarceration place. The scowl.
Okay, that's the only question I have.
It is kind of unusual that that would be in a public document.
Well, it's right here. I just took the time to read it. It's fascinating reading, but anyway. Congratulations to our, congratulations, or I don't know if that's the appropriate word, but you know, I just appreciate so much our police department, how far we've went from 1912.
From ordinance three.
Ordinance three, yeah.
You know, that's $600 a year. They didn't have to pay income tax on it in 1912.
That's true.
And no benefits.
It didn't start till 1913.
No social security.
That's right.
I'm old enough to remember when the Cookville Police Department had a jail.
That's probably a lot of money if you applied.
Thank you, thank you, police department.
All right, that's good information, though. Anything else? All right, this meeting is adjourned.